It's still high risk and we consider that commercial development in that canyon is still a poor choice such as the RV park that was proposed earlier this year. There's only one way out of that canyon and if a big fire breaks out, as we've seen in the past, it's going to put lives and property at risk. There are several other fire problems in the canyon, one being the Gun Club. We commend Deborah Figueroa for her decision earlier this year to close the gun range even before the Lake Christine fire broke out. That took a lot of courage, we think, on her part. And again, we think it's affirmation for the fire conditions that exist in the canyon. The Coalition has concerns about the future of the Gun Club. We don't want to close it, but we want to see management change so that it's done in a comprehensive and safe manner. We think it is run like the Wild West now and a fire is imminent. We also take offense to the fact that you have to join the NRA to join the Gun Club. We consider that a violation of constitutional right and we don't think that we should be forced to join a political lobby in order to use city land, even if it is on a lease. So, we would like to make input on the future of the Gun Club. We're interested in fire mitigation work this summer, or hopefully it'll happen this fall, but maybe push off to next year. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Annette Franta. I am -- my residence is 865 Stonebridge Court in Glenwood Springs. I am here tonight to represent the Oaks Lodge in Glenwood Springs and am here to simply invite you and your friends and neighbors, hopefully you will spread the word, to our tribute to the first responders in the valley. We'll be hosting again this year for the fourth year on September 11th and would like to continue to do it on September 11th in conjunction with other national tributes and recognition programs. And we're going to be hosting it up right here in the courtyard Tuesday from 11:00 to 1:00. And we'll be having pulled pork sandwiches at the, thanks to 19th Street Diner, and cheeseburgers and watermelon and coleslaw. And if everyone is invited to come, we'll be serving all the officers who attend free the meal at no cost and then, of course, any community representatives who would like to attend and participate, show their respect and appreciation for a $5 contribution. So, I just wanted to share that with you all and hope that you can come attend again. We've been getting some support from some of the city staff to help with sound and that and I just wanted to thank you for that.
What time is that again?
11 o'clock, so 11:00 AM until 1:00 on Tuesday, September 11th. Next week.
Thanks for putting it on every year. We really appreciate it.
You bet. If anybody wants.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, anyone else who would like to speak to us about anything not on this evening's agenda? All right, seeing none, I will close that and bring it back to council for any council comments. Go ahead, Shelley.
Comment? Again, this is another kind of invitation for the community. There is a local at the farmer's market next Tuesday also, starting at 4:30 to 6:30 PM over at Ninth and Grand. There's a EV ride and drive for anybody who's interested in learning about electric vehicles. It's a great time to come by. It's part of the EV drive sales event and you can come by and test drive vehicles, learn about them, check vehicles out. There's going to be some of the local car dealerships there and other people that own electric or plug-in hybrid electric vehicles. It's a great time to come and learn about them, so come on down next Tuesday.
Thanks, Shelley. Jonathan?
I've had a couple people unsolicited tell me, not as a member of council, but just in their excitement about how great the new bike trails are in South Canyon. I don't know necessarily what the opinion of the South Canyon Coalition is on the expanded bike trails, but I know among the mountain bike enthusiasts that talked to me, they were very highly, had a lot of praise for the company that built them. They said that there's nothing like it in the state of Colorado and they ride really, really well, so good job, city. And other folks. And the other comment, I guess it's a question. Carl, do we really have public city land that we lease to an agency that people have to be a member of the NRA to utilize? If I want to go shoot my gun at the South Canyon landfill right now, I have--
I guess I'd have to go back and read the lease. We do lease lands. We have a lot of terms in addition to using it.
Can we look at that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Can I comment on that?
I'd love that. I'd love that.
Would you? The city leases actually a lot of property around town and like the Roaring Pork Anglers is a retail store that's actually on city-owned property and I don't think it's probably appropriate for the city to start analyzing how they do business and deciding if they should be open later, seven days a week or not, or how they handle returns. So, I think it's a little difficult, once we make that decision, to lease to a private entity to then kind of define--
Well, I don't--
But ahead of that lease--
Yeah.
You know, we could decide if we want to lease or not city property. We also lease the, to Whitewater Rafting, the boat ramp in West Glenwood, which I'd love to take my boat out there, but I can't. It's city-owned property, but it's not within us to tell them how to use it once we've leased it to them, so.
Yeah, I, most I can do is take a look at the lease and tell you who it's leased to. I think in terms of what you do beyond that, I can take a very brief look at it if Counselor Davis makes some very points about the lease. Typically, we step back when we lease a facility or a piece of ground or whatever and, you know, we don't control business practices.
Well, I think we should potentially look at future leases to have at a minimum a non-discrimination clause or things like that to, it's public land, it should be serving the public and I think basic, low-bar type things like non-discrimination clauses. Not that that necessarily would apply with guns, but--
Exactly.
You know, if it's a city asset, we should be making sure that it stays somewhat productive for city use.
Okay.
That's my comment. Good point on the ramp.
I mean, I don't advocate one way or the other.
Right. It's a fair line. The both of you made.
Yeah, yours is better.
All right. Any other council comments? I will announce one agenda change. Item 17, which was the annual report from the Glenwood Springs Historical Society, will be moved to the September 20th meeting. So, if you're here for that, you don't need to stay. At this point, we'll move on to a proclamation. This is a proclamation recognizing Colorado Cities and Towns Week, which is scheduled for September 10th through the 16th, 2018. Whereas municipal government is the government closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents, and whereas municipal government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities, and whereas municipal government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their benefits, and whereas Colorado Cities and Towns Week is a very important time to recognize the important role played by municipal government in our lives, and whereas the Colorado Municipal League's member cities and towns have joined together to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different projects and information, and whereas Colorado Cities and Towns Week offers an important opportunity to convey all, to all the citizens of Colorado that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement. Now, therefore, I, Michael Gamba, Mayor of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado, do hereby proclaim September 10th through the 16th, 2018, Recognizing Colorado Cities and Towns Week. In the City of Glenwood Springs, I encourage all citizens, municipal government, elected officials and employees to actively participate in Colorado Cities and Towns Week. Would you like to be the recipient of this proclamation?
I think we should send it to the CML. Thank you.
Sure. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda this evening. The minutes of the August 16th, 2018 regular meeting, Airport Property Scenario Planning Project, and an amendment to Recreation Engineering and Planning Inc.'s contract for the Two Rivers Park Shoreline Improvements Project Final Design. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Jonathan and a second by Steve to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is a presentation by the Colorado Department of Natural Resources, Division of Reclamation, Mining and Safety regarding the South Canyon Fire Mitigation.
Oh, yeah. They're all, I was gonna say, all those are full.
This works again. Watch your new screen if you want.
That is not it. This is it. There it is.
Thank you all for having us this evening. I'm Tara Taffey. I am a, kind of a coal fire person for the state of Colorado, a senior project manager based out of Crestview. I've been working on the fires in Colorado for about, oh, eight, nine years and I've been working in South Canyon about that long as well. As stated earlier, we had some, I came and visited with you guys last fall, I believe, and we did have reclamation or some mitigation work planned for this summer. With the very dry winter and the even drier summer, we just did not feel it was prudent to put heavy equipment, vehicles that have catalytic converters, anything that could cause a spark up there. I visited the site in July and it was just scary dry. So, we decided to hold off. We will be putting in the project to bid this fall. The design is done and we will hit the ground running as soon as the snow melts in the spring. So, I will likely open the bids as early as the beginning of February so that if we're able to start, you know, April 1st, we will. So, we will be, you know, South Canyon is still at the top of our priority list based on its location, proximity to Glenwood Springs and the heat that we see at the surface there. So, we've put together a little bit of a presentation. Tonight with me is Jeff Nettle from Tetra Tech. Tetra Tech has a contract with the state. They help us kind of manage the 32 fires that we have throughout the state. They kind of, they do the day-to-day operations. So, Tetra Tech is the one out there flying unmanned aircraft to look at these fires. They help me with construction oversight, specifically when we're managing a project this big. Maybe I can be here a day or-- Alan Sorenson from the state is also here and he is a mining engineer and he is going to be the project manager for this. So, Alan will be kind of the face of our agency during that reclamation effort. I will check in and then Tetra Tech will be here daily. So, we have quite a bit of coverage. So, if you have any questions about the upcoming project, specifically in the design, Alan has really dove into the design this summer and put that together and then Jeff also can answer questions about the design and also some of the stuff that I'm going to talk about here. So, I'm going to go ahead and get into it. The history of the South Canyon, you know, we all have seen this slide before. Fire started, the original fire started in 1906 and the miners just blockaded it off and mined around it and that was on the west side of the canyon. In the 50s, the miners showed up, looked like 1953, the miners showed up for work. There were flames coming out of the portal and they abandoned it. And so, and that was on the east side. So, at some point, they had stopped mining on the west side and moved over to the east side of the canyon. In 2002, there was a coal fire, or the coal seam fire and that coal seam fires initiated our coal fire investigation project that we do every five years where we go to every coal fire in the state, take a look at the, the conditions on the ground, what the surface fire danger is. We prioritize those sites. If there's ones that look like, you know, they need more frequent monitoring, we monitor them as much as necessary. South Canyon happens to be one of those sites. We monitor South Canyon very, very frequently. And this summer specifically, we've been monitoring at the, at a minimum monthly for vegetation and, and new vents. This is kind of hard to read, I guess, but it's, it's a temperature summary of the boreholes that we have on site. So, back in 2013 and 2014, or 2014 and 2015, I'm getting mixed up now, we drilled several boreholes on both the west and east sides of the canyon. The west side shows the highest temperatures, which are over 1,000 degrees. However, that borehole that's reading that temperature is very deep. So, luckily, we don't see, specifically on the west side, we don't see those very high temperatures on the surface. The east side, we see slightly lower temperatures in the boreholes, but we see much higher surface temperatures and that is why our initial effort that we'll be doing next spring will be focused on the east side. And then, we have some kind of hurdles to jump through to get to work on the west side and so, we'll start working on that after that. This is just our 3D model. These 3D models that we've built of the sites and, and I say "we," but Tetra Tech really built these models, have come in incredibly handy. We are able to model the, the surface topography, the underground mine workings. We have four coal seams in South Canyon, three of which were mined on multiple levels and at least three of them are burning. We're also able to model all of our borehole and temperature data. So, these 3D models come in really, really handy when we're planning a reclamation effort. So, this is the South Canyon East. This is actually a video. I'm going to play it. This is an aerial, and we, I guess we don't use the word drone, unmanned aircraft that we have been flying and I believe Tetra Tech's been flying these on a monthly basis on both south and east sides of the South Canyon fire, or the west and east sides of the South Canyon fire and I have a video of both. And while it's kind of playing, I will try and point to, oh, this just did something. Is it playing? I don't know what's happening. This might just be an older version of PowerPoint. Maybe it won't play. That's not going to play. Ah, bummer. But, in the meantime, I can, does this work? Yeah. So, and it might not be easy for you guys with your computer screens to see, but at least the public can see. Up at the top here is where we see the highest temperatures. We have 900 degrees roughly. It's still playing and it'll pop back up, but roughly 900 degrees up in this upper area and then the fire is moving to the, I guess that would be to the south. And so, you can see this area is all devoid of vegetation. We've been working in there for several years. A couple of years ago, we went up and cleared out this area above the access road because it was, we were starting to see some venting up there and we really wanted to clear the vegetation away. And so, when we fly, we fly the whole, you know, the whole side, but we are also focusing on this upper area because if the fire is migrating and moving, we want to know it so we can get up ahead of it, clear the vegetation to keep, you know, the wildfire danger down. Also, while I have this slide up, our Soil Seal, which is the project that we're working on, and the project that we're working on now is designed to, we're going to be backfilling so about, starting here and down to about here. There are several large subsidances, so there's these big kind of dropped-out areas where the old mining rooms have collapsed. And so, they're kind of deep, maybe 30 feet deep and we're going to pack all of those full of dirt and then lay a, it's a geo grid, actually, is what we, we settled on, which will help kind of stabilize things. If things move underground, it'll move with it so it doesn't break up the cover that we're putting on it. And then, we're going to put four feet of soil over top of this entire area, roughly. And basically, what we're trying to do is stop airflow into the fire. And so, it's not, we're not digging out the fire. That's, that's virtually impossible here. What we are doing is trying to stop the airflow from lower down in the hillside and, and in the hopes of slowing the progression of the fire. So, like I said the last time I was here, we're not, this project is not aiming to put the fire out. It's just aiming to slow the progression of it by sealing off all those vents. And, and there are vents. When you walk into that, they're not vents, they're intakes, in all of those subsidances along the edges, there's fractures and if you take some really dry dust, you can actually watch it suck in to those open areas. So, there's a lot of airflow. We also had that kind of phenomenon with boreholes where it just sucked, we would take little smoke bombs and just watch it just pour down the boreholes. It's very, it intakes a lot of air from down low in the canyon. So, that's the plan for next spring. And then, you know, obviously, we're going to continue to keep an eye on it as long as we're in existence and continue kind of trying to come up with something to do here. The problem with the site is it's, the fire's very deep, the mountain's pretty tall and there's not a real good way to excavate it and put it out. The mine is also collapsed, so when we drilled, we would have 100-foot sections of just kind of rubble and so, like, trying to inject underground with that large extent in this steeply dipping area is, is just not something that we're in the position to really do. So, we will continue to come up with ideas to try and see if we can stop it. You know, one idea that we've tossed around is kind of a grout curtain, but there's some issues with that, so that would, that wouldn't put it out, but that would at least kind of maybe stop it from continuing to the south. So, we'll keep you posted. The west side is a little different. First, access to the west side is extremely difficult. This is another video that's not playing. But where we see, you can see there's a couple areas about halfway up the hill and then at the top of the hill where there's no vegetation. The lower area, we don't see a whole lot of venting in there, but we did remove all the vegetation and spray it with a pre-emergent herbicide several years ago. We do have some hot temperatures on the surface, but they're not, they're nothing like what we see on the east side, whether the surface temperatures.
On the west side, 250 to 300.
250 to 300, whereas on the east side, we see 900, sometimes 1,000. So, once we get the east side kind of buttoned up, we do plan on starting to work on the west side to try and figure out what to do there. The problem is, is that while the east side access is difficult, the west side access is even more difficult, especially with the establishment of the trails and kind of the trail system and recreation in there. And this road that we have built in there is, it's not feasible for use for construction. It's just too steep. And so, our thought is actually to try and come from a different direction, perhaps from the landfill or, I should stop this, perhaps from the landfill or going up the, the, kind of the valley next to it. And so, you know, we're still working with the town of Glenwood or the city of Glenwood and, you know, internally with Tetra Tech and DRMS trying to kind of figure out what we're going to do there. The, we will be doing a little bit of fencing. I think we settled on this corner right here for, at the very least, a gate, but something to block so people can't get up. It's extremely steep off of the road right there, so you're not going to be able to really, like, walk around the end of it. We'll take the end down off the edges to get it in and that fence will be something that's, it's not going to be a barbed wire fence. It'll be something that's relatively aesthetically pleasing to look at, possibly a, like a fake wrought iron. They're not wrought iron anymore, but that's what it would look like, would be a wrought iron style fence. It's relatively short, maybe 50 feet. And then, I don't know, I can't remember, did we discuss doing anything lower at all?
Lower impact signs that's hopefully going to be stolen.
Right.
But it's not a threat.
Yeah, so kind of ugly signs, so something similar to the carcinite that the Forest Service puts up that just says, "Don't go there," you know, "dangerous mine gases" or something like that, but, or maybe not "dangerous mine gases" is the wrong thing, but just something that kind of tells people they don't want to go there and also makes them not want to rip the signs off. Because we have some really cool mine fire signs that I'm sure decorate the walls of many, many people because they are never left on the site. So, so, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it for the west side. We'll do that on the fencing portion and the signs as part of the project that we're working on, on the east side next spring. And I'll work with the town of Crestview, or town of Crestview, I'm sorry, I was just at their town council. I will work with the city of Glenwood on, on getting, you know, the locations and the aesthetics right on those. So, we're going to continue monitoring. The frequency of this is need-based, so if it was raining every day for the next two months, we probably wouldn't feel as much of a sense of urgency of getting out there and flying as frequently as we have been. We'll do the surface cover next year and some discreet fencing and signage. If necessary or as becomes necessary, we will remove vegetation from vents that open up and we're looking at alternatives for access for our South Canyon West. That's all I've got. I'm happy to take questions. Yeah.
So, you said that you, your agency monitors all the coal seams in Colorado and I've been sitting here all these years thinking we were unique. Is that not the case? Is this, there's how many coal seams?
Turns out, you're not special. No, I'm just kidding. No, your, your fire specifically is kind of unique, but there are 32 coal mine fires that we know of in the state. We have, ranging in size, South Canyon is one of the bigger ones, definitely in the top, probably three or four. Right now, we're in the process of excavating a large fire up near Craig. We, in the past few years, have done mitigation efforts at a coal mine fire that's less than one mile from the town site of Meeker. We also have done one out in Rangeley. There are the fires along the Hogback just off of I-70 that made the news a couple weeks ago, right by Newcastle. There's a large fire near Rifle Gap. Is it Rifle Gap? HI?
Harley Gap, Rifle Gap.
Rifle Gap is the HI fire. It's a very large fire, one that we've done many, many projects on over the years. It's another high priority. It's not ranking as high as, say, South Canyon is right now. We also have the Sunshine Mine Fire, which is adjacent to the Sunlight Ski Area. So, there's quite a few. Those are kind of the big-ticket ones that come to mind that we've done some work on in the last several years.
Well, we appreciate your attention to that. Every time I drive up Four Mile, I look up that way and hope that somebody's paying attention.
Yeah, and we are. And like I said, we will continue to pay attention to it as long as we're able to, so.
Thanks. Thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Um, how long do you anticipate the total mitigation effort to take?
Next spring?
Yeah.
Um, three to four months? It's, it's unknown. Yes, three to four months would be what I would, I would guess. Um, it, it depends on how well it goes, I guess, and how the weather cooperates and, you know, how s- how slimy and sticky it can get up there when it rains. So, um, it just, it kinda depends on how things go.
Okay.
It's a remodel.
Yeah, I know.
So anywhere between two months and two years.
Right.
No, um, probably three to four months is our guess.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks very much for coming in.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck with your, uh, efforts.
Thank you. All right, let me get this one out of here. Just gonna yank it out. There we go.
All right, next item on our agenda is the Sixth Street Roundabout.
So, good evening again. This is just a discussion of that, of the Sixth Street Roundabout and the landscaping project there. Um, sorry, I'm opening the wrong thing. Um, I have been working with the DDA trying to put together the, the bid package for that project. And as we were going through the bid package, we realized that, um, you know, there were a few things that, uh, probably needed some more work before we actually put it out to bid. Um, the first thing that we saw was that, um, we, and we probably should've realized this before, but, you know, there wasn't really a lighting plan with it. Um, as we were going through, you know, um, our Parks Department said, "Terry, you know, as soon as we get those trees in the middle of the roundabout, um, we're gonna be wanting to put up Christmas lights for the holiday." You know, "Is there any plan for lighting?" Um, luckily, you know, CDOT has extended conduit out to the Center Island. Um, and they do have conduit that kinda surrounds the Center Island. But unfortunately, um, the conduit to the Center Island is blank for, uh, for our use, but the conduit that surrounds the roundabout is not blank. It actually has, um, wiring in it for the streetlights that kinda surround it. So, um, you know, we were concerned about holiday, holiday lighting, but also concerned about potential safety issues as you exit the tunnel, particularly on the, um, on the south side of the tunnel. You know, uh, I don't know how many of you have been down there during, at night, you know, during the dark. It, um, it is pretty dark down there. And once we put our landscaping in, you know, we've, um, Shannon's got a, a beautiful plan for lilac bushes along that, that, um, path edge. And, you know, there was a feeling that it might present a safety issue if we didn't have some path lighting through there to, um, to help, you know, with those kinds of scary safety issues. So, and we thought a lighting plan would be a good idea. Um, we started to look at, um, you know, our, our schedule overall. You know, it's, um, it's becoming later in the season and we were, you know, trying to rush to put this together and also trying to, um, you know, work with CDOT on the, on the access permit. Um, but we recognized that as soon as we get this out to bid, we're gonna be essentially planting those trees and then trying to, um, blow out our irrigation system for the year because the Parks Department usually blows out their irrigation system in mid-October. Um, and we, you know, none of us really know, um, when we'll have our first hard frost. So, um, the trees need water, um, and up until the time of the first frost and sometimes a little bit passed, uh, for brand-new trees. So, um, you know, it, it just became more and more apparent as we went through this review that it really wouldn't be, um, a good time to bid this project. We also felt like if we, uh, put it out in the fall, that we would have contractors kinda taking advantage of the lateness of the season and perhaps giving us higher bids than, than we'd hoped for. Um, then another issue was the, uh, we have, uh, some stormwater vaults that are kind of in the center of that, um, area adjacent to the path that, before you go into the tunnel there. And I can bring up those drawings so that people in the audience can see. Anyway, there, we talked, um, a number of times about access to the stormwater vaults in this, in this draw. You can kinda sorta see it right there. Um, that's the access path and those stormwater vaults are just right here. And we need to be able to get in to, um, factor those out. Um, we have, you know, had discussions with you guys about how we access and we're buying a, a new piece of equipment to actually be able to, to make this radius and back in here. Um, that's that Vector truck that we had talked about a li- about a little. But, um, you know, when we had discussed it from a landscaping, um, vantage point, um, Shannon had proposed grass creep pavers in that area. Um, partially, you know, just to maintain the landscaping aesthetic. Um, and also not to create a place where people, um, you know, saw void and wanted to hang out there. You know, it was more to kind of, uh, keep that area under wraps and not, you know, create a place where people just hung out. Um, when we started discussing the cha- you know, the, um, the need to maintain the budget and, um, and perhaps add this, this lighting, you know, uh, I think the DDA went through an exercise. Derek, is he still here? Oh, thank you. Derek and the DDA went through an exercise to try and pull, um, you know, some money out of the landscaping to, um, be able to offset, you know, costs of pavers, cost of a lighting plan. And, um, you know, I felt like it was, um, you know, the council had approved the, the landscaping plan. You liked Shannon's work and that we shouldn't arbitrarily go ahead and, and pull, you know, those kinds of things out without having another discussion with you. So at this point, you know, we'd really like to, um, propose delaying the bid until the spring. Um, but we could, you know, if the council really wanted us to, go ahead and push this through. But that's really, that's the decision point for this evening is to either go ahead and push the bid through and do what we can, write provisions into the contract about hand-watering the trees and perhaps try to, you know, we have, um, a fairly limited budget this year, five hundred and fifty thousand in the A and I fund for this project. And to meet that budget, we would actually need to back out some of, it might've been fifty percent of the, of the, um, perennials to, and, and replace those with grass, um, to be able to meet that five hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget, um, which is possible, but may not be preferable in the long term. Um, because, you know, the per- the perennials have the aesthetic value, um, that they did, but adding the, the grass over time, I think, might lead to higher costs for maintenance for the area. So, um, those are kind of our, our, our thinking around, um, delaying the bid or trying to push the bid forward. Uh, do you guys have any questions for me or for Derek for that matter?
Any questions for Terry or Derek?
Yep.
Go ahead, Shelley.
I pushed the wrong button. Um, would, so if you took some perennials out and then, that would be, you said about fifty percent, actually?
Fifty percent of the perennials.
And would that be to kinda keep the cost at the, at the set amount that's budgeted and, and afford to put in the lighting and stuff? Is that what that is?
So, with Derek Walder with Boundaries Unlimited representing the DDA.
Thanks, Derek.
Um, so the discussion with Shannon when this came up, and I'm gonna see if I can pan this up. There we go. Um, with the need to be able to, uh, add the electrical and lighting into this plan was to look at what were some options in there in order to free up some of those monies. Um, we don't have a pricing on the electrical lighting at this point or at this juncture because we don't have a design for it, but we were trying to free up something close to around fifty thousand dollars. And so Shannon took a look at her estimate, um, for this design that was associated with, with which she had spent a lot of time with a couple of different landscape contractors discussing what the individual unit prices were for these materials. And so in doing so, um, in looking at that number of fifty thousand, she began looking through this and saying, "Okay, where could we make some modifications in that?" And that's really where this came about is this, these areas in purple that you see here, um, magenta up there on the screen, um, are the perennial areas. And so we would have to condense the plants, maybe put them out a little bit more sparse or trans- uh, transpose some of those areas into the lawn and landscape in that sense, instead of having the perennial plants and the, the mulches underneath them. Um, so in order to get about fifty thousand dollars, that's what it meant was going to about forty to fifty percent of those perennials being modified into a, a less expensive, um, grass option.
Would the grass have to be mowed in the future?
It kinda depend on how these were, um, implemented. I don't know a lot of these details. I was brought in on board about three weeks ago on some of this. So, um, the areas that are mowed, it, it probably would be likely that they would be need, to need to be maintained in that way. So Shannon hasn't reworked a plan. That'd be her next step is we kinda work out lighting and those types of things is to work, rework this plan and to, um, make those areas probably blend together better than an engineer might say they would.
Okay.
And, and, and really give you something that, again, the maintenance departments would be able to maintain without too many more headaches.
So, right.
But there would be some more mowing going on.
Cause I thought we had talked about in the original design was that it was gonna be low water. Um, and I know you need irrigation to get it established, but hopefully low water after that.
Yeah.
Um, and kind of low maintenance with native kind of vegetation.
So if you look at the plan up on there, you'll see that there's this lighter green area.
Right.
And this is more of what you're talking about with that native. The darker green or the brighter green, those are more of the sod areas laid out there. And so what Shannon's looking at, I mean, if you, if you're looking at the perennial areas up there, those are probably transferred into sod areas because they're closer to the, to the pedestrians. You wanna have something that does more manicured and maintained in, in look than you would down in this more native-ish rural kinda setting. Well, now I went and did it. You get slow for a little bit and then my impatience makes the whole thing go flying. But, um, yeah, so that's kinda the difference in there. And so I think she's talking more sod areas than native grasses.
Okay. I'm wondering if, if it would be an option, you know, to meet the budget for this year to go ahead and try to, you know, temporarily put off some of the perennials, get the, to get lighting in and afford that type of thing and then, um, you know, plan on putting those in next year or something, just a suggestion. Rather than changing the whole plan, just.
Yeah, and we had some of that discussion as well. Um, and, and to see, again, we need to get the package out to a lighting designer to tell us exactly what's gonna be necessary out there and what those costs are gonna be. Then that's gonna kinda dictate a little bit further of what's left for landscaping. And then we can look at that and say, "Okay, let's say we only have five hundred thousand dollars out of it." Then how do we maximize it? And again, how do we make an opportunity for the city to come back in and expand the perennials it desired with that? Because again, this is, it's, it'll be a beautiful plan if able to be implemented as designed. And so we don't wanna lose all of that, but if we're stuck in a budget for 2019 and, uh, then this is kinda the discussion parts that we're entering into. And if the city wants to expand it and add more budget in 2020 for these landscapes, then again, wanna work with Shannon to make those opportunities available.
Well, I'm glad you figured out the lighting case sooner as opposed to later, cause we definitely need it out there.
Yeah, yep. One more note about the lighting is that, um, you know, we don't really know the depth that with, at, you know, where the conduits are installed currently. And, um, you know, traditionally, the lighting conduits would probably be below the irrigation that we would install. So depending on how, um, we know we have one blank conduit that goes to the Center Island, but depending on, you know, had the usability of these other conduits that kinda surround the, um, the Center Island, you know, we may or may not need to add conduit below. So ideally, it would be good to do the lighting ahead of the irrigation.
All right, any other questions for Terry or Derek?
Shannon is, uh, still involved in this project and.
Yes, she is.
Ongoing, I, and, you know, it's the first time in three years I can think of that I've had a landscaping plan put before us that where Shannon wasn't sitting there presenting.
Yeah.
So.
Derek and I aren't half as good as Shannon. To us, it's just light green or green.
Two engineers talking to me about landscaping.
See, I always have to tell Shannon, she tries to value engineer out everything. And I'm saying, now we're value landscaping.
Yeah. Nice. I, I agree with you guys, though. I, I, I think I'd rather, um, see that bid go out later and continue to work with Shannon to try to develop a plan that makes sense to. We are anxious, obviously, to get something in there besides dirt. But it is late in the season. And, um, we, it makes no sense to me to plant anything before we have irrigation fired up next spring.
I concur. I, I do need to open this up to the public for comment if, uh, is there anyone in the public who'd like to comment on this item? All right. Christian?
Sorry, I said.
Welcome, everyone. I, I would say I, I'm happy to hear the thought process that's going through right now. To, to do it without lighting and then go back in and tear up work is, is foolish. And, uh, I don't know if part of the, the scope could be removed and get the lighting done at the same time, meet the budget and come back in at a later date and finish it up. But I, I believe the right thought process is in play and I will certainly, uh, say that this is crucial for the city's arrival of our visitors, uh, getting this right. So, about, that's what I can say.
All right, thanks, Christian. Any other public comments? No, no pressure. You don't have to comment. There's only one other pub- public member here. Um, so I'll close it to the public, uh, for comments and bring it back to the council for discussion. And you're looking for a, a decision on it as to whether we wanna go out to bid now and, and take some stuff out or go out to bid in late winter?
We'll probably go, try to go out to bid this year with it still. You know, put it, continue putting together our package. We're still, actually still waiting for the irri- final irrigation drawings from here. Um, but as soon as we have a solid package and I think we get a lighting designer on board, you know, hopefully we would be able to release it sometime in December or January, um, for a spring construction. But, you know, we could, like I said, you know, we can try to press this thing forward, but I do think it'll be a lot better project if we wait till this, um, spring of next year.
I do have one question for whom, whichever of you would be able to answer. Um, the one conduit, I assume, is, is just for dry utilities. There's, there's also, um, irrigation water that is out to the Center Island? Or is it, does water, irrigation and electric need to go, go in the same conduit?
There are separate irrigation conduits as well. Yeah, there, there's a lighting conduit, but, and there are crossing irrigation conduits. Um, you know, whether they were mapped correctly or not, you know, Dean Gordon spent some time out there trying to find the ends of those conduit. And I think we'll, we'll find them eventually, but they're a separate conduit.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, would entertain a motion?
I will. I would make a motion that we delay the bid release for the Sixth Street Roundabout and Landscaping until December for a spring installation.
Second that. A motion by Shelley and a second by Rick to delay the, uh, bid process for the Sixth Street Roundabout landscaping and lighting until December. Is it, is December when you would like to do it or is that too specific, I guess?
I would say December, January, you know, just, I don't know exactly how long it'll ha- it'll take us.
Not before December of 2018, is that work?
How about not before, uh, or release bid, um, sometime in January? And if we release early, I mean, that'll be better, but.
Can we just say a winter?
Yeah.
Instead of December?
Winter is good, yeah.
Don't give her too much latitude.
Delay the bid release for the Sixth Street Roundabout and Landscaping until the winter for a spring installation.
Yeah.
And, and do you need a clarity, uh, in the motion that the revisions that would be made would be made to bring the project in at the original five hundred and fifty thousand dollar amount?
You know, we, um, we haven't talked about budget and I, um, you know, I, I can say that, I think, like Derek already said, that Shannon, um, spent a lot of time working, um, with local suppliers to get a, a pretty tight budget to the five hundred and fifty thousand. Um, to add lighting, um, I think will take us over that amount unless we're willing to change the landscaping plan. So if the council would like to, um, you know, add perhaps money to this project or wants us to hold to the five hundred and fifty thousand, we can do that. We would probably then need to come back to you with, you know, the revisions. How much more lawn area are we adding in ch- trading out those perennial areas?
In our budget today, I saw a number of six hundred thousand for Sixth Street. Um, so is it six hundred or is it five fifty? So is it 600 or is it 550?
So it's 550 this year. Is it 600 for next year?
Yeah, it's just a plug, but yeah.
And that's that 600 is not allocated towards, you know, permanent permanent six year. It's it is this
That's the landscape.
Okay. Oh, it is the landscape.
So and I guess my suggestion is I wouldn't I wouldn't want to pin us down to that right now. I would like to see, you know, what would it cost to build this plan with the lighting? And then go from there. We can we can discuss it. I mean, if if we approve it, our budget with 600,000 and this comes in at 750, we're going to have a discussion as to whether we build it, just like we are with every other project, South Midland, 27th Street Bridge, et cetera. If they come in over budget, we're going to be talking about it. So, you know, I don't know that we want to
Should we revise the motion to say, you know, go ahead, put it out to bid with this landscaping? And, you know, if the bids come in too high and we have to cut back on plantings, then we'll do it at that time.
We can talk about it at that time. That sounds like a good idea.
Or we'll discuss it.
Discuss it, yeah. So I'd say delay the bid release for the Sixth Street Roundabout and Landscaping, original design, until winter for a spring installation.
Yeah.
You still good with a second on that, Rick?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion by Shelley and a second by Rick to to lay the bid process for the Sixth Street Roundabout Landscaping and Lighting until winter of 2018, 2019 for a spring 2019 installation. Any further discussion?
You know, I I would just like to say that, you know, this is the gatewood, the gateway to Glenwood.
Yeah.
So I would hate for us to consider too many compromises after we've spent so much time designing this. And as you may as well
I know it by heart.
Define. The gate is this the gateway to Glenwood?
In my perspective, it is.
In your perspective, okay. So we agree on that. Thank you.
And I think too that the time and the discussion that was put into the original landscape design, I'd like to see more perennials and less grass and in the interest of keeping maintenance and water down. And and making it look better.
Yeah, well, Shannon already did a fantastic job. I just hated to start slashing things without, you know, really considering it with you guys, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Agreed.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and call the question.
Ingram yes, Goldish yes, Davis yes, Gamba yes, Vori yes, Karp yes, motion passes.
Can you see anything up there?
I can't see anything.
Not yet.
Oh.
So stop once.
Thanks.
How do we know that she's not lying? She might have this crazy agenda.
You can control votes, right. Thank you, thanks, Terry, thanks, dear.
Yep, thank you. All right, moving on. Next item is an intergovernmental agreement for fire protection and ambulance services.
So the the item on the agenda, Gary Tiltson, Fire Chief. The item on the agenda tonight is the result of a lot of meetings that I that I participated with the Rural Fire District in trying to revamp an IGA that was originally written in 1991, was modified three times in total over the years. Most of those modifications took place due to the funding formulas that were originally built into the the IGA and how they related to calls for service and assessed valuation. In 2013, the last revision was done to the to the old IGA to reflect the fact that the rural district was unable at that point, given the downturn in residential or basically property values throughout. Due to that downturn, the district was not going to be able to pay that old formula share. At the same time, there was a decision to ask the voters for an additional two mils of ad valorem tax, both in the city and the district, to to help offset that shortfall. At that time, it was written in in that Third Amendment to the agreement that the language about the rural district giving the city fire stations and trucks and a lot of that stuff was just so outdated that it needed to go. So the amendment included the language that the existing IGA would expire January 1, 2019. So over the last several months, we have worked to clean up the language, rewrite the IGA. Working with the rural district, we had a product that we thought was was pretty good. Then we sent it out to the attorney and
That's where the wheels fell off.
So there were some, the the attorney indicated that there was some language that needed to be corrected. So then we went back to the Rural District Board and and I'm sorry, none of them are here. They couldn't be here until 7:00, 7:30. I said, that's never a problem for council, they'll be behind. But they're not here. So we went back to the to the Rural District Board. We sat down with one of the members of Carl's team and talked about, one of the big sticking points is the termination language in that type of an agreement. If the rural district and the city were to decide to part ways over fire and ambulance protection, it would make it would it would be devastating to the district to try to provide the same level of service with the amount of tax money available. And it would put a large hole in in the amount of revenue coming in to operate the department as we know it in the city. So we've rewritten the language, it's it's all in your packets. It has met with rural district and legal approval at this point, so it's pending your approval.
In my defense, really, some of those provisions that we were working on were things like termination. I wanted to make sure that there were clear offer ramps for the city, frankly, both entities, if they needed to, for whatever reason. And that termination provision includes a 24-month notice to the other side that you're going to terminate, which in the world of public safety is kind of an important thing, is that you know that you have that amount of time to address whatever the situation might be. So that was, you know, and then also trimming back on guaranteeing a particular level of service because we just don't know what the future is going to bring and what we can possibly do. There is a, you know, the goal in the agreement that we continue to provide the same level of service effectively inside the city as we do out in the district, but that we have to recognize that there are circumstances where we may need to sit down and talk about that because of cost and ability. So those are the kind of things. I'm fairly happy with the the agreement the way it is at this point. And like I said, thanks to Anna off out of my office, Anna Eisenberg, who worked with the rural district to try to wordsmith this to get it to where everybody was comfortable.
All right, thanks. Any questions for Chief Tiltson or the attorney? Sorry.
You shall remain.
Seeing none, anyone from the public would like to comment? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Can I have I ask one question? And I'm just looking at the agreement here. Maybe it's a typo. For the IGA, effective term, the initial term of this agreement shall be January 1, 2018.
Right.
To December 2018, is that right? Okay, so does it? Did that be 2019?
I think by design, it's still by my design that it would be retroactive back to the 1st of this year.
Okay.
Because we also have some some text questions that are that are being asked before the end of this year that it I
Okay, so that's intentional, I was just
Yeah, I think retroactive unless unless legal missed out.
Yeah, I I actually was thinking in my head January 1, 2019, we did start in 2017. I understand the point, though, so we're kind of in this transition here. It's fine to have it retroactive because effectively, in terms of the money, that's what we're doing now anyway.
Okay.
Rick? No, I was reaching for my screen.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Jonathan.
Uh, Gary, just want to thank you. I I think being the liaison to the Fire District, coming on a year and a half ago, I feel felt like there's kind of been this long-running tension between the district and and the city over certain things. And I think through your leadership, you really helped and with Carl's input and the other staff. I think we have a really good IGA that that people feel is really good and it put a lot of that tension that might have existed, which I was never part of, but could sense to rest. So I just really want to thank you guys for for working through this and and getting something updated, hopefully, for the next, well, while. And with that, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the revised IGA for provision of fire protection and ambulance services.
Second.
A motion by Jonathan and a second by Jim to approve the intergovernmental agreement for fire protection and ambulance services between the City of Glanville Springs and the Glanville Springs Rural Fire Protection District. Any further questions or comments?
Did we open it to public comment?
I did.
I'm sorry. Good then, I was in line.
And don't you remember, we had we had a lot of comment from the public? No, we didn't. All right, so let's call the question.
Ingram yes, Goldish yes, Davis yes, Gamba yes, Vori yes, Karp yes, motion passes, unanimous.
All right, thanks, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
I think so. See, now I struggle knowing how to vote because I can't see
I'm just like told her.
Just have to look left and look right. Go right.
I always do.
So next item on the agenda is the call for public art for the North Landing site. This is a presentation by Jim.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm here this evening just to give an update about the the grant process. And just to go over kind of, there were some questions. It's been a long time since we talked about this. So we wanted to just kind of give an update of where we are and also just kind of outline how we got here. So the original grant language that we submitted to the National Endowment for the Arts included some language around having extensive community outreach to recruit ideas that would influence the art and that there would be a facilitator who would conduct community charrettes to bring together the artists and representatives of various organizations to to have that art kind of be developed. And that we would do a national request for proposals and RFP, Call for Art, if you will, process. And so that's what was submitted as part of the grant, and that's what we did. We put out an RFP earlier this year. The scope of the project, I won't read it to you, but essentially to create, to to find art an artist or artist team to create an original three-dimensional work of art for the North Landing site. And that we were looking for artists, applications that were showing artistic excellence and that that they would kind of give us an approach to what that they were going to propose and that there would be that that art would be developed with the community's input. So we I've got the the official note of action from the National Endowment in May. And the total performance time for the grant is January this year until the end of 2019, which frankly, we may be in kind of a time crunch. We didn't actually get the notice until May, so that put us a little bit behind. And then we had our public process to go out to that RFP, so getting that together took a little bit of time. So we will certainly strive to to meet that timeline. And if we have to, we would ask for an extension. We hope for that not to be the case. So we're kind of now on an aggressive timeline. July 5, the City Council authorized that call for art. And then we issued the proposal, the request for proposal in July. And then the responses were due on the 21st of August. We will bring the Arts and Culture Board, all of the responses that we received. We received 17, and they will take a look at those and hopefully provide up to five finalists at that time. And then there would be a project advisory panel that would review those and potentially interview if there were a couple of artists that that review panel wanted to to talk to. Or potentially, there could just be one standout. The project award would be October 19, that would be following your October 18 meeting. So City Council would make that final award. And that we would have those community engagement charrettes later this year. The project advisory panel, when we submitted the grant, we anticipated working with the Arts Council folks. And so we, when we did get the grant, we amended it. And this is the list that was included in that amendment to the NEA. A representative of the Arts and Culture Board and Bonnie is the person who they've elected or selected. Leslie as the DDA Director, anticipating working with Leslie Lamont and having her be part of that team. Bill Kite, Angie Anderson, Brian, a representative from the City Manager's Office, and two artists. We haven't had success in getting an artist. It was identified as selected by the the Arts and Culture Board, so we're still working through that. And then hopefully, a member of City Council. So that's what we're asking for tonight. There are some federal requirements with this grant. I won't read them to you again, but we did represent that this piece would be placed in a plaza that was that is accessible to the adjacent sidewalk system and that would also have the public information that would be in Spanish and that we would also, that all of the public engagement would be held in an accessible building. So the submission requirements for the artists were for for them to provide an artist statement, bio, examples of work, a written approach to carrying out the project, and the indication of the ability to the availability to complete the project on that timeline and and references. And with that, I am open to any questions that you guys might have. I have all I have a lot of stuff here, so.
We don't need Todd?
And I've kind of gone through this, but there's my only concern with this was that there was no requirements that we would be bound to to keep it on that North Landing site or not be able to remove it. I mean, sometimes when you get federal money, there's, you know, there's like so much that you are then required to to do. And is that the case? Or as we develop this lot, I mean, maybe it'll end up there, but we may need to remove it, set it down Centennial Park for a period of time and move it back? Or are the grant people going to say, now you owe us $20,000 because you picked it up?
I didn't read that in the in the requirements that that are there, but there may be something that I I'm not seeing. And I think we can certainly look at that. I haven't had an opportunity to do that. I To move it.
So it's not specific to that landing site, really, just that it's adjacent to sidewalks and in a public place?
We, there is, there was some language about where it was and that we had to do a NIPA and did have to provide some information to the state historical folks regarding its 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 location because it's a catty corner to the hotel. So and we do have to generally meet the terms of what we've said, so there may be something that I'm not aware of. But but did did you go through that or did you ask?
I went through it specifically because we were looking at the need to mobilize it and take it off-site if there was development of that plaza. But that was with the intent of
Putting it back.
But as we read through it, we didn't see anything that, any language that would prevent us from
And when I read it, I didn't either, but we will certainly take another look at it with that eye because we it with that eye because we weren't looking at it.
Okay. And just to be clear, so after it goes through the Arts Council, or whatever we call it now?
Arts and Culture Board.
Arts and Culture Board.
The Arts Council is a separate...
Yes, okay. I'll always get that wrong.
Right.
But then they'll come up with a recommendation and we'll actually see that for final approval?
I think this group will come up with the recommendation, right? This panel that was put together.
Yeah.
So the Arts and Culture Board is going to review all of the submissions and come up with five finalists or, or fewer than that, but up to five finalists. And then that review panel would be looking at those finalists and then making a recommendation to council for the final award.
So it will come back before us?
It will.
You don't want to end up with a brouhaha like Carbondale's?
What I don't want to end up with is something that is, has no historical or contextual relevance to the city of Glenwood, which we, seems like our public art has been, like we had a spaceman and we had, you know, I mean, perhaps the sheet metal cows under the bridge were, had some historical relevance, but I could have made them, you know, it had no artistic skill associated with their development. And so my biggest concern is actually the review criteria by which we're looking at this. And I was trying to find the email that you had sent me. Could you, could you go over that real quick? Because it doesn't really include artistic skill, if you would, and it doesn't include historical or relevance or kind of a contextual relationship to the city of Glenwood Springs.
So there, there was certainly language that kind of addressed that, the feel of our historic downtown and kind of those drivers that make Glenwood special in the overall language of the RFP. And I would say that, and maybe Brian would come up and help me a little bit, but I think that the Arts and Culture Board was pleased with the responses that we got because they were showing examples and that the idea of the, the public process to have charrettes hopefully would get to art that is in context. And I think when, I think actually maybe Deborah sent that to you, forwarded something for me, we were looking at this, these submission requirements as the judging criteria. So essentially giving points for the artist statement and bio. So if they didn't have it, then, you know, they wouldn't be getting those points essentially, that they have recent examples of work, that they have a written approach. And so that written approach would, you know, talk about how they would work with the community on those things. And I would say that I didn't see any spaceships or any spacemen in any of the artists' submissions that we received, so.
I certainly had confidence in the committee that is listed there, but would certainly like to have some opportunity for a final review because we've had so much art laid down in this community that would just make you shudder that somebody approved over my tenure here.
Yeah, I share your concerns.
All right.
I guess I have a comment or a question.
Go ahead.
Glenwood's no longer exists.
[laughing]
No, I, I think Jen probably really spoke to most of it. I can just reinforce that, that she did do a really good job with the RFP and providing that language with the intent to reflect the culture and capture the feel of Glenwood Springs. I think the process of it is designed in a way to make sure that that final product does come out as such. So we will get council's eyes on it.
Rick, your button is flashing.
Yeah, just another quick question on the process. The last item here says, "Community Engagement for the Project Series of Charrettes." And usually a charrette means, you know, you're choosing among different sorts of options. So is the thought that there would be, you know, this person or persons that are selected would be providing three or four examples of what they would do? Or one example? Or, you know, so what's the, what's the purpose of the charrette, I guess?
I think that the idea is that the art would, would be designed subsequently to that or would be, or would reflect what comes out of that. So I don't know that we have it exactly designed to say, bring three and, you know, let people pick, but it's more intended to get kind of what are people looking for, no spaceships, no spacemen kind of feedback. I think part of the reason why we asked for the, the examples of work is so that you can get a sense of the type of work that that artist would create. They won't probably create outside of the general bandwidth of what, the type of art that they make. So there will be a little bit of, you know, it's in this realm of what that artist makes and then there would be that kind of input from the community.
So by the time it comes back to the council, then, there may be like several choices to be made? Or is this going to be kind of yes or no?
So we, this process is to select the artist or the artist's team, not necessarily the art. And the charrette would, would be the process that kind of developed the art and that it would be fabricated subsequently to that. And that's how we wrote the grant.
But along that same thread, at some point, would there be a concept to review? Like a concept for the actual piece? Or is it just going to be selecting the team?
I think it's selecting the artists. We can certainly have the artists, once they've, they've had those charrettes, we can certainly have a presentation to council about kind of the direction that it's going, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. And I have to say, I'm very excited about the process. I think the Arts and Culture Board, they've talked quite a bit about community art and sidewalk art and, you know, art around town type of things. And they're very dedicated to getting quality art pieces in and product. They, and I, and I know they mentioned that they're very impressed with the 17 submittals, you know, that's why they had those, that they're high quality. So I'm excited to see it. And, you know, as, as an engineer, I don't want to be in the position to choose art for the community. I think it's important that you really have a creative process. And I'm going to leave that to people who have a more creative eye for, for art than I do. And otherwise, everything might always look the same. So I'm actually looking forward to seeing what comes out of this group. I think we have a great group selected to make these, kind of make this decision and bring it back to us. So I'm looking forward to seeing it.
Thanks, Shelley. Jonathan?
Well, I think the ask is that one of us sit on that, this panel. So one of us probably should.
I don't think so.
There's, you, you did receive an, and I apologize, there was an updated staff report and they're dated the same date. And the action in the first one that you received in your packet did say no action. And then there was a request to have a seat. Deborah had, we had batted around and we apologize for the correct memo not being in there right to begin with. But the memo that is in your, is in your Dropbox now should be representative of the request.
So we're going to have a council rep on that group?
Yeah. And Deborah's idea was that, that you might actually take the City Manager's Office seat if you were interested.
What? Deborah's idea was what?
That Shelley might take.
City Manager's Office.
Or whomever from city council would take the, the City Manager's Office seat in this, on the project advisory panel.
I was just reflecting in Shelley's words that she thought an engineer probably might not be the appropriate person for choosing art.
I just thought that as council, kind of having the last word on it, maybe it was important that we worked on that initial.
Well, I, I guess I want to ask that for clarification. Are we, if we have a council person appointed, are we abdicating our ability to have the last word on it? I'm okay with that. But, but yeah, I don't want to sit up here and the seven of us judge if we have our Arts and Culture Board whittling it down to five and then this appointed board making the decision. I'm fine. I'm making the decision. Is that, is that what we're, is that what's contemplated right now? Is that we?
If council would like to have a seat on this project advisory panel, that you select somebody from, from city council just to sit on this.
But as it's currently structured, after the finalist is selected, that's it. It does not go before council for up or down vote, right?
It will, on the 18th of October.
It will, okay.
Yep, for final award.
And so one alternative, just to make sure I understand, is not to have a city council person on the panel because, in fact, whatever the panel is sort of looking at is going to be coming back before the council anyways?
Yes.
Okay.
There's that timeline again.
I don't know. I guess that would be my, my preference would be let the, let the community in this committee decide and have the charrettes get the input and then bring it to council.
I think the charrette would happen after the individual is selected.
Oh, with that.
Right. So artist selection, charrettes, we'll make, have a presentation at council with kind of the direction that the artist is going fabrication and then installation. So that's kind of the next step.
I guess I would say if, if someone on council really wants to be on this commission, I think it's fine. Otherwise, we can say, no, Deborah can have someone from her office be on the committee and we'll see it when we see it. So does anyone, does anyone here really want to be on this?
Okay. Well, we will, we will bring it back to you then on the 18th of October for that project award then.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you, Jen. Brian?
Yep.
Nope, she doesn't say for lack of interest. It's a lack of interest.
Okay. Next item is our appointment of our Downtown Development Authority representative. Were we able to reach a conclusion at what we have on the board in terms of six or seven members?
Yeah, it, it's six members plus a council member. So, yeah.
Sometimes it happens.
I think if you guys wanted to, I mean, it sounds like there's some desire to maybe expand that or add an alternate. If you wanted to, I think it'd be fine tonight if you wanted to appoint somebody and appoint an alternate as well while we update the ordinance to match up to that. Because I do see that, you know, there is value in having those additional voices. And certainly, it sounds like it's hard for all the members to attend every time.
Sounds like that alternate would be...
Yeah, I would second that. I, sitting on that board, I really, it's difficult sometimes to, when you have six. I always thought there was seven, but if there's just six, oftentimes there's three. And I would appreciate that other seat and that other voice in there. So I would assume if we approve tonight a, a permanent and an alternate, then we update that, then the alternate would become a permanent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or we can just change it to allow, because right now the ordinance doesn't allow for an alternate.
It doesn't. I mean, as we've done in the past, I'm uncomfortable with the idea that you're appointing an alternate sort of outside of those parameters with the direction that we're going to kind of catch everything back up since you happen to be interviewing now that's on your mind. We have people that are interested and want to engage. I hate to see that not happen.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it'll be first place or second place?
First place is a permanent member and second place is the alternate?
Yeah.
And just, so just vote for one? Think everyone's got a ballot?
Do we vote? Just vote for one, not two?
Just vote for one and whoever receives the first, most votes gets the first, I mean, permanent position.
And we'll vote again for the alternate.
We'll vote again.
All right. I like that plan.
So are we doing one, two?
So we're just voting for one?
We're just voting for one.
Is that with an X or a check?
And then we're going to vote again.
With a one.
X, check, one. Yes. Puncher, Chad.
Hold on, we got an essay coming.
Fun day to Chad.
Chad Lee.
Christian Hanny? John Zalinski? Christian Hanny? Christian Hanny? John Zalinski?
There we go.
All right. So it's four votes for Christian Hanny and then two for John Zalinski.
So we have a member and an alternate.
For now, sort of the permanent member, John is an alternate.
So now we need to make a motion to that effect?
Does both.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to appoint Christian Hanny as the permanent member on the DDA Board and John Zalinski as an alternate on the DDA Board.
Second.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
Did somebody move it?
I was, I was hoping so. I couldn't make the motion, so.
I moved it.
So John, we have a motion by Jonathan and a second by Shelley, was it?
Or Steve. I think he beat me to it.
Whatever.
Okay. And a second by Steve. I don't...
I was hoping it's Shelley.
Why don't I do the second first?
Okay. So whoever made the motion, someone seconded it. Let's call the question.
Okay. All right. Great.
I'll let her figure it out on the record.
Ingram, yes. Goldish, yes. Davis, yes. Gamba, yes. Moorehees, yes. Karp, yes. Motion passes. United.
Okay. Moving on.
Congratulations, Christian. You've got the paying position.
And to John in absentia, thank you both for being willing to serve.
Yep. All right. Next item is the Grand Avenue banner. Presentation?
I don't have a, I don't have much of a presentation. I'm standing in a little bit for Deborah here. Staff has looked at the Grand Avenue banner and there's concerns from staff members that they're, that our staff members are at risk when they're in the middle of the street and they're changing out the banner and that there's a significant cost to the city that's not being recouped. And so in looking at that, it's, it's across the CDOT right of way and those banner poles are kind of grandfathered in. So if we were to make major changes to them or attempt to move them, it may be that, that CDOT wouldn't allow us to make those changes. I think there was an effort to try to ask at some point to put the banners, the banner poles in a different location over Grand Avenue, a safer location, and that wasn't successful. So there's some options that Deborah has recommended that we look at, having an electronic message board sign at Sayre Park, having the, a banner that would be, banner poles that would be in a different location, someplace in town. And then also just the idea of doing away with a banner altogether. And if we were to do a banner over the road someplace else, that, that we recoup the cost of putting up and taking down the banners.
So I have a question for you. So by making, for example, adding pulleys and cables to the existing poles, would be making modifications to them in CDOT's view?
I don't know that we've asked that specific question. I do know that, that Robin has looked at, that there's been some, trying to figure out if we could, if we could make it, those banners be installed in a safer way and that it wouldn't be kind of taut across the road and that it would probably require closing lanes of traffic for an extended amount of time. I think Robin is here if, if he has more information on that specifically.
Mike, I think I understand what you're suggesting is maybe if we can remotely raise the banner from the sides. We've, we've talked about that. We've scratched our heads about how to do that. You have to unfurl the banner across five lanes of traffic. You have to attach it about every two feet so the top stays in place and the bottom stays in place and then try to raise it. to raise it.
I think, you know, it probably would take more mechanical engineering than we want to spend, but I think you could actually do it where you raise it like a flag on one end and then it goes across. It's just, it would have to be a mechanism that you have a bar on one side and a bar on the other and that's what you're raising up is the bar and then, you know, another pulley slides it across, so you actually aren't laying it across the street.
We've come up with all sorts of scenarios, one including a bow and arrow. So one including a bow and arrow. Just shoot a pole line across the road, but, you know, certainly there are probably mechanical ways to do it. We haven't come up with anything that is reasonable at this point.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it's, you know, I don't have really strong feelings about it. Do we have, I avoid Grand Avenue so much, I've got to admit, I hardly ever see the banner myself, but how many people use the banner and how often are we changing it and is that community concerned about this?
It is booked by the end of January for the entire year. We do them on a one or two week cycle depending on the event. It's extremely popular. You know, we've had, we've had some sort of crazy issues happen to us. Our truck's been hit, one of the guys was up in the bucket, gust of wind blew his heart half off, we busted a windshield on a car. She was pretty excited. So there's a safety issue and our guys just see more and more, I guess we're all distracted driving to some degree and we're just concerned that somebody's going to get seriously hurt.
I think, I would think the, sorry, I didn't press my button. I would think that the popularity of the program is probably directly proportional to the cost of the program to the nonprofits.
So if we started charging $1,000 per banner installation or something, we probably would not be as popular?
You know, it certainly, I guess that's one advantage of having a municipally owned electric system, we've got the ability to do things like that. I was a big supporter of the idea of an electronic variable message board, a color display, you can get those pretty nice. I don't know where we put it that is going to be effective and not cause drivers to go, you know, as they're passing by trying to read it, but I think it's worth some more discussion.
As evidenced by the.
Shelley, go ahead, Shelley.
I have a question, you know, and looking at some of these LED signs are certainly pretty nice and I assume we could, you know, have a logo that's not a big advertisement, but that it has the, maybe the Glenwood Springs logo or something on it. But I think traffic plays into this and it's playing into the decision of not wanting to have it on Grand and I have to say, over the years, I think it's a great service for nonprofits and for events, you know, community events that don't necessar, they're not high dollar, they don't have a lot to spend, so it's a great way to advertise for the community to come together. But driving on Grand, I have to say, I don't notice it like I used to just because you have to pay much more attention to traffic now because traffic is heavier. But I'm wondering if there might be a better location where we're going to get a good amount of traffic but not as much driving in them. Have you guys looked all over town? Did you think about Sixth Street or some other location where?
There's a number of places that we could put it over a public right of way, but the exposure to the masses, I think, is the hard part of that. We could put it on Seventh Street, but people on Grand Avenue are probably not going to see it. We could put it on Sixth Street.
What about by the community center? I guess I'd be interested in seeing, you know, comprehensive list of city properties where we could locate it that wouldn't be hazardous and.
Not everybody travels on Midland Avenue.
Right.
You know, it's, you can come up with a list of 100 places to put it, 100 reasons why it won't work.
But the community center might be a good location that's community oriented, it's, you know, it's a public place and it's not, we won't run into the issue with Parks and Parks Commission where they don't really want to see an LED sign in Sayre Park, which I can understand.
There's a number of possibilities. We can certainly review all that, come up with some alternatives and report back to you and let you guys decide what you want to do.
That'd be my question.
The plan is currently that it will remain in place for this year and any changes will begin on January 1st of 2019, is that what we're thinking about?
Yeah, we've got a pretty steady list of people who use the banner, so we have reached out to them and told them as of January 1, we will no longer be putting the banners over Grand Avenue at that spot. Just trying to give them a heads up.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Should probably be a comment maybe for a younger council person than me to make, but, you know, I sort of feel like advertising your events in that manner, you know, I mean, I can see my grandma and grandpa driving their Model A down Grant and finding out what was going on, but I just don't feel people are getting that information so much. I do like the idea of having a year to talk to these organizations and maybe be able to give them some alternatives or some advices to how to reach out to people. For example, we heard in one of our meetings today with the, you know, what's going on in Glenwood's site and encouraging people to use that. I think that's probably more and more the way it's actually going to, people will get connected to what's going on in the community and helping, we have a year to help these people make that transition and maybe say goodbye to this older method. Thanks.
That's my idea. Steve?
You know, I have to agree with Jim. I, this was prominently placed in the Glenwood Post today. I don't read my newspaper by, it's the first thing I do every morning, I read it off my cellphone, not from a piece of paper, you know. And it had a prominent place in the Glenwood Post and yet there's not a single person that's come before us tonight that I know of to, and maybe you're here for that, but all these groups, you know, I just kind of thought there'd be a dozen people here talking about how they really need that banner and I'm not seeing it. I think that January 1, in my opinion, seems like a reasonable time for people to make other arrangements and I think that we should probably discontinue putting ourselves in harm's way and the traffic, people driving there as well. And I agree, I know there's a banners up there, I don't really read it because I'm just trying to stay alive out there and when I do notice the banner, it's usually last weekend.
All right, thanks, Steve. Rick?
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, it almost becomes like a good housekeeping seal of approval to have your banner up there and, you know, it means maybe that the community's behind you, but I could see with the safety issue with the current sort of situation we have, but I also see a bigger safety issue by putting a big sign up in Sayre Park because by that time, people are driving 35 miles an hour, you know, and they're supposed to be driving 25 and if somebody slows down to 20 to read the sign, you know, we might have a problem there too. So, you know, and I agree that maybe we don't have people here tonight, that's probably because they're watching us on their cellphones at home, you know, as we debate this fundamental issue here. But, you know, a solution might be, you know, I forget who was telling me that they were in Las Vegas recently and it was just, you know, too loud, too bright, but, you know, sort of a banner over Grand Avenue, you know, that would face both ways and, you know, that you could change quickly. But you're talking a couple hundred thousand dollars for that or more and I don't know that that's worth the investment either, so.
In my next.
You are, Jonathan.
Oh, good, because I wanted to jump on that. Actually, about a hundred thousand dollars because we do have, it's not in the budget for the DDA, but it was on that project list of banners for the Grand Avenue Bridge. And the idea of those banners is that they would be long and there's already the banner posts and everything. Why are you smiling? Something on my beard? My wife always laughs at me for something on my beard. But anyway, the idea is that they would rotate out seasonally and there'd be different things that celebrate different things and it'd be, you know, it would be so intrusive that people are distracted, but it would be like a nice gateway to Glenwood type thing. And so it's a hundred thousand dollars, you know, and we're first spending $27,000 a year. And I get honoring all the contracts we have for this year, but the safety thing just makes me very, very anxious and so I think the sooner that we can eliminate a safety issue for our employees, the better. But let's honor the contracts and go from there.
Steve?
I'm sorry, I just have to come back to, because I've been in those DDA meetings and we've had that presentation here, those banners across the bridge where it was like flowers or pumpkins or it was just ours.
Seasonal, though.
Seasonal, yeah.
But there might be like a doc holiday.
But it wasn't like dates and times of events that were happening, anything you'd have to read or it would be really distracting, it was just more of those.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, what were those billboards they used to do 50 years ago that did that? They had one word and then another?
Then the next word.
The old Barbasol commercials.
Wall drug.
Dry berry.
Anyway.
All right, that's the only reason I'm smiling.
Oh, okay.
All right, you know, I'm not a big fan myself of the LED readout board. I come around the corner up there at the CMC in Spring Valley and every time I see it, I think, oh my God, there's a big accident or something because it's like flashing police lights or something going on up there and it's very distracting and that's a road that has no traffic on it virtually, so I'm not that big of a fan of that, but at this point, we probably ought to open it up for public comment and I think, we have someone who might want to say something to us about it?
How do I get this on the screen?
Go ahead and put it on this table right in front of you here.
Can we make it bigger? And bigger and bigger and bigger.
I think that's probably, well, there we go.
I am Don Markley, 631 Melray Circle, Glenwood Springs, and I'm here tonight with the Lions Club and I'm here and I got here real quick because I read the paper about 3:30 and realized that something the Lions Club's been working on for almost a year is probably what you guys are talking about directly or indirectly. The, we've been working with the school about putting a marquee, it's the only high school around that doesn't have one, on top of the Glenwood Springs High School, whatever you want to call that out there, wall, and we have done quite a little bit of research on it to the point where, for instance, there is a turn lane plus two lanes of traffic, so it isn't like you don't have any room, you could move off to the side if you wanted to read it and it is in front of it. We have documented the, all of the setbacks and that type of thing and they're there to required. And what we proposed to the school was that the, that there would be a six foot roughly sign on each side with a five foot in the middle. The one on each side would be electronically controlled, well, they're all electronically controlled, but that it, those two would be alike. After contacting the people that make the signs and that type of thing, they have suggested that the angle that we have on that drawing isn't quite steep enough to let the people as they drive by be able to read it. And the other question they had is how many lines we would want on the sign because there is a direct ratio between the width of the writing and how you see it as you go by. And so, right, this proposal is for a four foot high, six foot long with the five foot in the middle and they're all controlled by computer and that, and the high school is the one that would have the computer for that and it would turn around and we've already talked very thoroughly about put similar signs to what goes across the highway, that they would be totally in favor of those, they would not allow anything that was derogatory towards high school students and they would, and then of course they would want to, on football night, have it up there, the football tonight and that type of thing. We have, we've been working on this for almost a year and it's been kind of setting for six months while I was working on another project and then I read the newspaper tonight and, or this afternoon, so here I am. I think it's a very reasonable alternative and could benefit most of all the high school and the city at the same time. And it would be great to see the two of them working together in a way that could make that possible. I'm wide open to questions, that's where I'm at.
Thanks, Don. So is it my understanding that the Lions are, as a project, are looking at funding this sign board?
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Is it my understanding that the Lions Club is looking at funding?
The Lions Club would be, was starting out to be the primary one to do this because they'd had no marquee, but part of the reason why it's been setting because it's very costly. It's somewhere between 60 and 70,000 for the complete sign and the computer necessary items to go with it.
I see.
So when I read that in the paper today, it just said, whoop, you better get down there and show them what you're doing or what you want to do as the Lions Club. We don't have the funds to do that ourselves, we would have to go out and fundraise to supplement any monies that weren't provided.
So at this point, you don't have any money raised for this project?
We have not looked at raising money at all. We are still working on, for instance, the three, the two posts you see on there on the bottom where the signs are, the sign does not sit on that wall, it's about one foot above it and sets behind it and because of the angle of the signs, it has to have its own freestanding. Another real concern that they had had to do with maintenance and upkeep and there is a contract that can be available to maintain it and upgrade it by the people that make the signs.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any, go ahead, Shelley?
Oh, Don, thank you. I was wondering if, so did you say that the school is on board with this and they are, they are interested in putting up community announcements as well?
They, that was, that was our approach from the very beginning because of the money involved and they agreed that that would not be a problem at all and as long as it wasn't advertising some substance that's not good for kids.
Right, right. Okay, okay, thank you.
Do you know if the school has any budget for this at all?
No, they have no budget for that at all. It would be a, it would be something that the Lions Club would be the lead on to go out and raise the money for it, but I don't think that's a particularly big, I did not, I've talked to several banks and something like that could be done, especially if you, according to the newspaper, you were thinking 35 to 50,000. It was in the newspaper today, something like that would let us get it ordered and then it could move forward. I'm not asking for an approval tonight, I just wanted to be part of the decision-making process of what you want to do.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else have any? Anyone else have any questions for Don regarding this proposal or concept?
I don't have a specific question, but just wanted to sort of say thank you to the Lions Club for what, what you do in the, in the community.
Thank you. It, this seems to us like a really worthwhile project because the school not having a marquee and the fact that it could be large enough that you wouldn't have banners across the street. Okay?
All right, thanks, Don.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we will bring it back to council for, I guess we need a motion as to what we want to direct staff to do.
That would be great.
All right. Jonathan?
I move that we direct staff to honor the contracts we have with existing nonprofits and other entities for the rest of 2018, but discontinue the use of the banner over Grand Avenue starting January 1, 2019. Additionally, I move that we also take no action at this current time on any other alternative signs until we can get a better sense of what the community would like.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to continue using the current banner polls and process through December 31st of 2018, beginning on January 1, 2019, ceasing the use of that function and not pursuing any other alternate signs at this time until we have some understanding of what the, where the community wants to go with it. We have a motion by Jonathan and a second by Steve. Shelley?
I guess I have a question on, on the motion. Would there be any direction for staff to pursue partnership or look into what the Lions Club is interested in doing, or pursue any other options for, for?
You know, I don't want to make it a part of the motion, but I would encourage staff to pursue, if there's a partnership that's available that makes sense, then I think at the staff level, they could probably bring something to us if, but I'd like for them to vet it. I don't want to force the hand of staff by including that in a motion by next date, so.
Okay, because I think it's certainly an interesting option, and it's, I like the concept of partnering with the community, community organization, as well as the school district. It's a great location for it, so I would like to see us work towards something like that, and so I'll have to think about your motion.
Anything, Shelley? Rick?
Well, and Don, you know, as a Lion, you and I are both Lions in the club, but seventy thousand dollars is about twice our annual budget, or more. And, you know, so, we might want to cast the net, you know, a little bit wider with the other service organizations, like the Rotarians, the Colonnians.
I thought I made that clear, we would be the lead, and we would be the many other organizations to accomplish that goal.
So, that might be a starting point for talking about some partnerships, so, thank you.
Yeah, I, I do think the idea of the signs at the high school, you know, are, are interesting and show some merit. You know, I, I'm not sure that we want to go out and spend seventy thousand dollars ourselves on it. I, I can see the public benefit to it. On the other hand, I'm not sure I see seventy thousand dollars worth of public benefit to it, you know, so I just talk myself in a complete circle, so.
Well, it might be a good, might be a good discretionary grant or consideration.
I think we'd need to have some representative from the school district let us know if they want to dedicate one or part of that to the city, which would then contract with nonprofits. So, maybe the count, or the school district should just talk to the nonprofits directly. But I think that's why my motion stands as it is, because I think there's just too many, there's a partner in here we don't even know about for, for that.
What are the FMLD mini-grants for, how much?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five is the max?
All right, that's a chunk.
That's a good, good option.
Okay. All right, Jim?
Yeah, the only, I mean, I agree with your motion, Jonathan, and I, I would just say, if, if we were going to be looking into considering some sort of, you know, electronic sign, I would be interested in knowing if there are any sort of safety implications to that, you know, what has been the experience with municipalities where they put up these signs, has it caused people to, to have that kind of rubbernecking and looking away and maybe resulted in safety issues, which is one of the things we're trying to avoid now with the banner, and I'd hate to kind of inadvertently create another one without really knowing what the data say. Thanks.
If I might, there, we do have regulations that are in the new development code that address electronic message board lines, in, in terms of how bright they can be, dimming them at night, how often they can change, which I think is just twice a day, where they can be located, and all sorts of things with the safety in mind.
So, it wouldn't look quite like Las Vegas?
No.
All right.
Yeah, page 218.
Along that questioning, Ben, Jen, sorry, am I speaking out of turn?
That's right, go ahead.
Do you have any feel for, would this meet our sign code?
Well, the school district doesn't necessarily have to comply. We would certainly work with the school district to, to encourage them to meet the regulations, especially as they relate to how bright they can be at night. We have had a couple of signs in town that were quite bright, that we had to work closely with those businesses to get them to be dimmed, especially at night, so that people aren't blinded.
Right, great, thanks.
All right, so, we have a motion, as previously stated, by Jonathan, and a second by Steve. Any further discussion? Let's call the question.
Ingram, yes. Goldish, yes. Davis, yes. Gamba, yes. Voorhees, yes. Karp, yes. Motion passed, Mr. Adams.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Don.
Next item, ordinance number 21, series of 2018, and ordinance of the City of Council, City Council of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado, meaning section 020.020.020 and 030.020.030 and 060.090.020 of the Glenwood Springs Municipal Code pertaining to the composition, powers, and duties of the Building Board of Appeals. This is a first hearing.
I apologize.
That's all right.
We, when we did the adoption of the 2015 building codes, we did identify a fire board of appeals that could be the body that would hear an appeal related to the fire code. We never created a fire board of appeals, and this is what we're suggesting is a, is a good solution. We can't come up with the time and memory exactly when the building board of appeals met last, but it was, when we did the last adoption of the, the building codes, they were instrumental in going through that and making recommendations that we carried forward this time, but we were thinking that rather than having two boards that never meet, we could have a fire board or a fire seat that would be on the Building Board of Appeals.
All right, any questions for Jen?
I have a question. Says that we don't know if they've met in the last six years, Building Board of Appeals?
Kathleen, the administrative person in our office, has worked here six and a half years, and they haven't met while she's worked here.
So, do we still have a sitting board?
We do.
We do?
And I'd probably be the liaison to that.
And you're on there?
They only meet when?
Good job, Steve.
On an update.
They only meet when they?
If there's an appeal.
If there's an appeal.
Okay. Are there, so, my only question would be, are there people on there with knowledge of fire safety for structures and buildings and specific to the fire code type thing?
Right, currently, there, there's an engineer, there's a contractor, there, there was an architect who would have maybe potentially some knowledge of that. There is currently an open seat. I'm not sure how many applications we've received, but we could, if we made this change, recruit for that seat.
For someone that has that knowledge, I'd be more comfortable if we had someone designated on that seat to have some background in fire safety and, because it, it can be a little different from just the building construction safety and.
Yeah, I think Bob Patillo sits on is that, and he has sat on that board for a number of years, longer than six, and, and I've started a lot of fires in my life.
You have? Well, that's, that's good. I have too.
A couple of them actually in pension.
I'm actually a good fire builder, but.
We were.
We are suggesting that the seat be filled by somebody who has experience with fire suppression systems or is a current firefighter or a retired firefighter or, you know, has moved on to a different career, but who has experience.
So, what would it take to get that changed? Would that be a separate move?
That's what's, that's what's, what's before you this evening.
And this is an additional spot, right?
It's changing one of the citizen seats to be a fire seat.
To be a fire?
Yeah.
Okay.
We could certainly add a seat.
We could get Jim Mason.
Oh, I see it in here, great.
I'm sure I could recruit him for one meeting every six or seven years.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions for Jen? Anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for discussion and/or motion. Jonathan?
I move we approve ordinance 21, series of 2018, meaning section 020.020.020 and 020.020.030 and 060.090.020 pertaining to the composition, powers, and duties of the Building Board of Appeals.
Second.
A motion by Jonathan and a second by Steve to approve ordinance number 21, series of 2018. Any further discussion? Let's call the question.
Ingram, yes. Goldish, yes. Davis, yes. Gamba, yes. Voorhees, yes. Karp, yes. Motion passed, Mr. Adams.
So, you're going to advertise for that position and?
Yes.
Great.
I'll talk to Jim, and we'll interview him.
All right. Next item, this is a, an item continued from prior council meetings, it's ordinance number 20, series of 2018, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado, meaning article 020.030 of the Glenwood Springs Municipal Code by the addition of section 020.030.120 to provide terms and conditions for limited electronic participation by members of city council at city council meetings. This is a first reading.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, can I just, this, I think this has been continued from several meetings because this is something I'm particularly interested in, I wasn't at one of the meetings, and we ran out of time at another meeting, and I know Todd had expressed some opinions on it well, and so, out of consideration for me being gone and a vote not being taken, I'd like to extend that same courtesy to Todd and continue this to when we have a, a full quorum.
Which we know for certain won't be the next meeting, so at a minimum, yeah, it will be the first meeting in October.
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard that.
So, we have a motion by Jonathan and a second by Steve to continue this item to the first meeting in October, provided we have a full quorum or a full council at that meeting. All right.
Where we're going right now, we miss them too, for some reason.
Till, let's see, August 18th, I mean, April 18th, 2019.
Yeah, they can call in by phone if they're not here.
That's right. All right, um, let's go ahead and call the question. Oh, sorry, Rick, did you want to comment on this?
Well, no, no, I think this is a reasonable thing to vote on, I'd like to vote yes on it, but I was just wondering, Eric has been joining us for meeting after meeting, waiting to sort of tell us a little bit about technological possibilities here, and.
Sorry, Eric. You've got nothing better to do on your, every other Thursday, do you, than come here and listen to, a lot of people blow a lot of hot air, so, sorry.
I just wonder what you guys want to do.
We'll call you.
Right.
By telephone, yeah.
First in October.
You know, it might be just kind of helpful if at some point Eric could kind of give us sort of a preview of maybe what he's thinking about, so that when we meet in a couple of weeks, we will have a chance to kick that around. I don't know if we want to take the time and do that now, or if you want to write us an email.
No.
If I were you, I'd probably, you know, not want to write an email, but, you know, that's.
Well, Todd should also have the opportunity to hear that.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so, at a future date, we will get information from Eric on this. I, I will say that my biggest concern at all is just functionality of the technology. You know, if, if, you know, someone's voting from Bailey's, say, for example, and all of a sudden his voice cuts out, and we don't know if he's there or not there, I don't know how, you know, I have this little board up here that tells me when someone wants to talk, which I usually ignore, but occasionally I look at it, and, you know, how are they going to signal me that they want to say something to discuss an item, those types of things? So, anyway, so I would be interested in your technological solutions on that. So, let's go ahead and call the question. Great.
Ingram, yes. Goldish, yes. Davis, yes. Gamba, yes. Voorhees, yes. Karp, yes. Motion passed, Mr. Adams.
All right, report from city manager.
Nothing for me.
Report from?
From the attorney.
Yeah, I, twenty minutes' worth of information. No, I, just a couple of really quick things, actually. Couple of things that we've been working on, and it won't take twenty minutes, but things we've been working on, moving forward with, trying to create some templates for the Confluence area and South Bridge in terms of going to Raptor with those. I'm hoping to probably have a conversation with you guys at the next meeting about that, a little bit more formally, so have been working on that. We've got diligence application coming up for a water right that I'm probably going to need to talk to you in exec session at the next meeting. I know we're going to be short, a couple of members, but I can preview that for the two, the two of you that are going to be gone, if you want to give me a call, and I'll give you a preview on what that's about. I'm trying to think what else, kind of big out there, because there, there have just been some things that you've assigned to me that I've been trying to work through, and I figured it was worthwhile to give you an update. The last one is actually a personal request. Would it be okay if I missed a meeting on October 18th? I would like to fly out that day for college week, for Parents Weekend for my daughter who I just sent to college. We're going to try to make sure that there's not anything like disastrous on that agenda, and obviously, somebody from my office will be here, but I wanted to make sure it was okay with you that I do that, because, you know, that's kind of the first thing, is your legal counsel, so.
No land use questions on the agenda or?
Yeah. That was the goal, was to try to keep it straightforward and simple. I likely will be here in the morning and fly out of Eagle in the afternoon, would be my plan, so presumably, like, we need to do an exec session on something we could do in the morning.
Sounds like a, a good, good reason to go.
Yep, thank you.
I think we do have one land use item that I don't think it's particularly complicated, we could set it over if we had to.
Yeah, and I'll have either Jim New or Anna Idenberg here. Anna's been covering the planning commission meeting, so she's fully familiar with the land use applications that are pending, plus she's a lot nicer than I am, so, could be Anna, or it could be Jim.
Okay. Sounds good. We're adjourned.